I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. It's 6:00 PM, it's Tuesday, December the 17th, 2024. We are at the Granberry City Council Regular Meeting. We're located at Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in Granberry, Texas. And for those of you out there who are watching on www.granberry.org/live, welcome, and for all of you here, that is an opportunity for you if you are out of town or have another need to not be here on a Tuesday night, but still want to see what's going on in the city of Granberry. We appreciate you all, and we will start with the invocation with Mr. Arlo Louvin. If you will rise, then we will do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, great. Father God, Lord, we come before you this evening, Father, and we're just thankful, Father, you tell us that you always hear our prayers, and, Father, we're thankful for that. Thank you for this assembly, Lord, and for the men and women that are here that care about the business of Granberry, Lord. Father, we just, Lord, we just bow in your presence, Lord, and we humbly ask, Lord, that you would give everyone wisdom and guidance, Lord, as they make decisions for our great town, Lord, and that we would all begin to work together, Lord, in one accord, and, Father, that things would come out, Lord, according to your will. Father, we thank you for the men and women here in the audience, Lord, and what they mean to our city, Lord, and each thing that they, each organization that they represent. Father, we thank you most of all for Jesus, Lord, and for this season, Lord, and what he means to our world, Lord, and to the saving grace that he has brought to us. Lord, we just love you all, we all love you, and we just thank you, Lord, for who you are, in Jesus' precious and holy name. Amen.
Now, from the rise of fire, I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The great state of Texas, honor it as fire, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move to proclamations and presentation, and the Friends of Memorial Lane are here, and tonight, we plan to present a flag, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Mr. Donnelly or Ms. Pennell, I'm not sure who, to explain what we have, and I'm gonna bring the mic down front, if you don't mind, okay?
Thank you, Mayor Jarrett, and members of the City Council. Appreciate y'all letting us come here tonight. Tonight, we want to honor... Oh, we want to do a picture?
Not yet, not yet.
Okay. Tonight, we want to honor Charles Baldwin. He was part of the Greatest Generation. After high school, he joined Army Air Corps, and when he was selected to become a fighter pilot, after approximately 60 hours in the AT-6 trainer, he was shipped off to England, where he flew 51 missions over Europe. And I have no idea what his record was, if he shot any airplanes down or anything, but he came home safe, back to the United States, and that's all that matters. All right. So after the war, he returned to the States and went to, into the clothing business with his father until 1964. He also continued service to our country as a reservist. February of 2024, Charles got to relive a part of his aviation, aviator life by getting to fly in an AT-6 again. You can only imagine what he was telling the pilot from the backseat. So, we come up to May of 2024. Charles, he got a chance to go to Normandy with about 79 other veterans from World War II, for the 80th anniversary of D-Day with his son. I've been there before, and I can just imagine the memories that the two of them created for, for his son to, to live out and tell the rest of the family about, because it's a very special place. He was greeted in Normandy by the thousands of French citizens that had not forgotten what their country had become in the late 1930s and 40s. They showed him and his fellow veterans the gratitude and love of being able to live in a free nation. After 20 years of faithful service to our nation, Ms. Julia Pennell, on behalf of Friends of Memorial Lane, would like to present this army flag that was flown in the military section of the Jim Burks Firefighter Memorial Park to Charles' family. Please come up.
Actually, he was in the Air Force. So we, I was able at the last minute, thanks to Aaron, which, and it now contains an Air Force flag that flew.
Thanks to Aaron, actually, we discovered it was an Air Force, and that, so we changed up, and it now has an Air Force flag that flew over Memorial Lane. So if you want to, if you'll hold the mic for me.
Can you take a picture around here?
Yes. Oh, that's beautiful.
Well, it's with great honor that Friends of Memorial Lane and citizens of Granberry present to you the family of Charles in honor of his time in the Air Force, and like I say, the flag was flown at Memorial Lane for a year and a half. So we're very grateful that the memories and his service to our country.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it.
I'm gonna turn it around.
Thank you.
Well, we just feel so blessed. My dad came to Granberry and was here almost two years, well, a little bit over two years. He moved here when he was 100, and it, he loved Granberry and was so embraced, really, by a lot of people, and was able to do a lot of things, had some great articles in the newspaper, and we had, we, he, he went on a great trip in June to Normandy, but he said his best trip was gonna be when he went to heaven. And so, August 27th, he went out like a Roman candle, and we just, we're so blessed to have him here, but thank you for honoring him. It means so much to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate, we appreciate, certainly appreciate the, Ms. Pennell, Mr. Pennell, Mr. Donnelly, Ms. Lando, all the folks over here. Yeah, this is great. Thank you, Michael.
And Judy.
And Judy. Good. Thank you.
I've gotta even shake my hand.
It's quite an honor. Thank you for letting us, the city of Granberry, be a part of that ceremony. Thank you, Ms. Pennell and Mr. Donnelly. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to have the council join with me in congratulating Rick Crown over on his retirement that's gonna occur on January 2nd. He's dedicated so much work, hard work and passion to, into the projects and leadership role in our community and in our organization, and has done a great job. I remember when he first came to work here, we were in the middle of Phase 1 of the D-SAL plant, which, Phase 1 of the water treatment plant. We were in a very precarious position trying to get that project finished by November of 2017, and he was successful in jumping in in the middle of that, of that organized effort to build that plant and got it finished, and we were on time and were able to produce our own water and not have to pay $11 per thousand from the AMUD organization. So that was one of the big things that he kicked off his career here with us about eight years ago. And then, the, the South Sewer Plant's another good example of infrastructure that he oversaw the construction of, and we, we got our first community block grant while he was here, and he oversaw that project of replacing an existing lift station. That doesn't sound very sexy to you guys in the public, but all these projects are huge as far as the need of the city providing services to you. But the most important thing that I want to talk about Rick and what he's accomplished is the culture that he brought and introduced to the Public Works Department when he first started, and that culture has been changed over there, and it's still changed, and now he's the Assistant City Manager, and of course, he's here at City Hall with us, and he's still affecting people with that same positive culture. His kindness, his integrity, his expertise, and his leadership have made the difference in so many people's lives, and in our organization and our community, and it's truly been a privilege to work alongside you, Rick. And Rick, as you step into the new chapter of life, we pray that it will be filled with joy and relaxation and all the adventures you've been waiting for. Please join me in wishing Rick a fulfilling retirement, everybody. You've made my job incredibly easier, and I want to thank you for that. I've got some other mentions tonight. Y'all remember about six years ago, some of you weren't even on the council, the bridge over here in the park, Shanley Park, became unsafe, and we had to block it off, and so we began taking bids and estimates and trying to figure out what to do, and at the end of the day, it was cost prohibitive, even before COVID, to address that bridge, and we were talking about maybe tearing it out ourselves, putting in some kind of a concrete overlook, and we've also talked about replacing it, but we did take bids, and it was three-quarters of a million dollars to replace that little bridge. And so, I want to thank two departments, the Parks Department and the Street Department. I'll just name the names of these gentlemen that worked on that. We did it in-house and saved the city about a quarter million dollars removing that bridge. Still have some more things maybe to do in that area, but we've removed the dangerous structure. The erosion through time had caused the foundation to wash away, and, and it was, you know, it's just, it's just been an old bridge, and it's, we've got newer bridges. We've got two other bridges in that park, so we don't plan on putting a third one in there, back in there. But David Carvalho, Derek Harper, Rob Brogdon, Dwayne Burke, Cody Rogers, Louis Trejo, Joe Mode, all had a part in that project, and, you know, they're not here tonight, but I want to mention them and, and thank them for, for going above and beyond the call of duty to remove that safely and efficiently. So we, we saved a lot of money by doing that. And then, the last thing I want to talk about is, last Thursday, we were able to have our annual awards reception and luncheon for the Christmas. We kind of combined all the, the service awards with, with Christmas lunch. We had a wonderful group of employees there, those that could come. We, we filled up the Conference Center ballroom, and during the event, we recognized employees who achieved very many milestones, and they're all recognized, and I'm gonna ask Carla to play a video that our staff put together, communications team put together so gracefully, and indulge about five seconds of time for each picture, so, thank you. Connie's our lady downstairs that volunteers, so, there's, there's audio that goes with it, and there we go. So way to go, team. You may recall in our strategic plan, and we carried it forward in our 2024 plan, was to, you know, recognize employees for exceptional service, and those distinguished awards that were given had a gift card with it, and also, they were nominated and, and chosen by their peers, and so that really helps the morale, I think, to have each other, supporting each other and nominating them, and so, thank y'all for that, allowing us to do that, and funding the luncheon and the holiday spirit that we're able to share with, with the entire team, and also, the, the recognition awards and what have you, it's, it's all based in our budget, and we couldn't do it without your support, so thank you for that. Couple of other recognitions I want to go through, the fire department, the volunteer fire department, they've got some outstanding members that were supplied to me, Carter Chance, Rookie of the Year voted by the department, David Lowery, Firefighter of the Year, Jacob Goodrez, Award Officer, or Officer Award selected by the captains, Colin Perrin, Chief's Award, recognizing his dedication and bright future in the fire service. Here's something pretty unique, two Master of Firefighting certificates. We're proud to announce that two Granberry Volunteer Fire Department members have achieved their prestigious Master of Firefighter certification. So this entails a lot of training, and it's training that's provided curriculum by the state. Bob Haggard, Operations IT Captain, Steve Wiley, Station 2 Captain, and this certification is awarded by the State Firefighters and Fire Marshals Association of Texas, is held by only 524 of approximately 34,000 firefighters in the state. So we are very blessed to have these two gentlemen in our volunteer department. We now have four master certified officers, a testament to their commitment and to the excellence of the fire service. So when you see those firefighters, be sure and shake their hand. When you see our team members at the city, be sure and shake their hand and thank everybody. So appreciate y'all allowing me to share that success tonight, and again, Rick, congratulations. It's not too late to back out. We'll take you back anytime, so, thank you, sir.
Okay. While you're shaking that firefighter's hand, don't forget to mention two, and mention it to your insurance agent, that we now have a ISO 2.0 here in Granberry, which is one short of perfect, I guess, the 1.0. Yeah. I would just fall to that, too.
We're gonna go into that more next month at one of the council meetings, when the fire department can be here and let the chief kind of give us a report about, and disclose how hard he worked for this certification that we've got for the city. So it's really good stuff. Appreciate y'all.
Other comments? Mr. Odom?
Yeah, I just wanted to recognize the staff that put together the presentation for the David Southern Lake Granberry Conference Center. Jeff, Chuck, Mike, Tammy, everybody else that was involved, it was an incredible honor for my family, and it was a really good time for the city, so I wanted to thank them and, you know, really say, job well done. We appreciate it.
Yeah, that was well done. Other? Okay. We'll move on to number... Ms. Walker, we have no one, so I won't bore you with reading that. It's out there. We'll move to number, that's number five, we'll move on past that to number six, the Consent Agenda, and all items on the Consent Agenda are routine or previously discussed items and will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the City Council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered under the Deliberation Agenda. Mr. Corrigan? Anyone? Nobody here? Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept the Consent Agenda as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Corrigan makes a motion. Second?
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. That will pass 6-0. Thank you, council. Now we'll move to the Deliberation Agenda. 7.1 is to consider adopting Resolution Number 24-17, accepting two statues from the Ken Hill Foundation known, and the statues are known as Black Star and Silent Prey. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. We, we have received the art as voted on in the past, and we wanted to do a formal resolution tonight in recognition of that donation. There's a great photo of it, and it was donated by the Ken Hill Foundation. That statue and Black Star, which is over in Shanley Park, is a little over $600,000 worth of art that's been donated to us, and what beautiful workmanship. It was designed by the famous, I think his name is Covell Jones, the famous sculptor. He has since passed, and these pieces were commissioned to go up on Comanche Peak Ranch, and with the passing of Mr. Hill, his estate wanted to donate these to the community and has been able to put this together and has done a fantastic job. So we do have a resolution that we've asked for y'all to approve tonight, and we have also, Jeff Ferris is the, the executor of this estate and also the president of the foundation that is being so involved and active in our community, funding various things for nonprofits and charities, and we just wanted to acknowledge their gift with a written receipt, and that's an acceptance letter that allows them to document what they gave to the city with the IRS when they do their annual reporting, as well as a nonprofit. So any other things y'all would like to talk about? Is Mr. Ferris here?
I don't see him.
I don't see him. Okay.
Counsel, questions or comments? Do I hear a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 24-17, accepting two statues from the Ken Hill Foundation known as Black Star and Silent Prey?
So moved.
I hear the motion from Mr. Oberdear. I hear a second from Mr. Wadley. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. That will pass 6-0, and we are very, very, very grateful to Mr., or to the Ken Hill Foundation, and certainly to Mr. Ferris for working with us, and our Arts Commission and other arts groups in the city, and Shanley Park, personnel over there. It took a while, but I think they're, they're, they certainly are an addition to the park out here, for sure, a positive addition. Okay. Number 7.2 is consider adopting, or awarding bid Number 24-25-01 to World Fuel Services, Inc. as the aviation fuel supplier for Granberry Regional Airport, and authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the contract on behalf of the city of Granberry. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. Y'all know that we have to do this every now and then, so we've advertised and I've rely on Cody to present this agenda item to you and make a recommendation to you, so Cody?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am pleased to present this request to award a contract to World Fuel Services as the aviation fuel supplier for our Granberry Regional Airport. In consideration of the pending expiration of our existing fuel supplier contract, the city advertised a request for proposals on November 9th and November 16th. We received three responses to this RFP, and a scoring committee determined that the best value to the city in terms of brand image, reputation, technology offerings, and personnel training opportunities would be World Fuel. World Fuel Services is considered to be an industry-leading aviation fuel supplier, and their offerings and capabilities with respect to customer service and efficiency will best support the rapid growth of our city's aviation operations.
Counsel? We're doing a little paperwork up here, Cody. Helping you out. Counsel, questions for Cody? Questions about this? No? We discussed this at length, as we would any of our bids, particularly one of this importance. So no questions, no comments? I'm gonna ask, do I have a motion to award bid Number 24-25-01 to World Fuel Services, Inc. as the aviation fuel supplier for Granberry Regional Airport, and authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the contract on behalf of the city of Granberry? Mr. Wadley?
Second.
Mr. Odom seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That will pass 6-0. We'll move to number 7.3. Consider awarding bid Number 24-25-01 for the building of the fuel truck storage at Granberry Regional Airport and awarding to Lever Construction LLC in the amount not to exceed 422,195, and authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the contract on the behalf of the city of Granberry. Included in that is to adopt ordinance Number 24-77, amending the operating budget for the airport fund for fiscal year 2425 to fund the fuel truck storage at Granberry Regional Airport. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I will again defer to our Aviation Director, Cody Mathis.
Thank you, sir. This item is to request to award a bid to Lever Construction LLC for the construction of a fuel truck and equipment storage building at the Granberry Regional Airport. The city advertised a request for proposals on November 9th and November 16th. We received three responses to this RFP, and a scoring committee determined that the best value to the city in terms of proposed timeframe for project completion, as well as previous airport project experience, is Lever Construction. Additionally, Lever Construction's level of experience with the city's airport projects is superior, with Lever being the company that constructed the new airport terminal building. Lever Construction has also been recommended by the terminal building's architectural firm, PGAL, and they have provided a letter of recommendation that is attached to this item. Thank you.
Counsel? Questions? I think we've seen the work that Lever has done at the airport.
And here at City Hall.
And here at City Hall, yeah. Oh, they did the downstairs. Yeah. All right. If there are no comments or questions, do I hear a motion to award bid Number 24-25-01 for the building of the fuel truck storage at Granberry Regional Airport to Lever Construction LLC in the amount not to exceed 422,195, and authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the contract on behalf of the city of Granberry? In this ordinance, we will also adopt ordinance Number 24-77, amending the operating budget for the airport fund for fiscal year 2425 to fund the fuel truck storage at Granberry Regional Airport. Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, on that motion, can we just do one motion, and it covers both of them, or do we have to do separate?
We can do one.
Okay.
I told, if I read it all together, we can do the one.
I make the motion that we go ahead and approve both of them, as stated.
Okay. Motion?
Second.
Mr. Oberdear, seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Okay.
Thank you, Cody.
We will pass that 6-0. Thank you, sir. Okay. All right, the next two are public hearing, and we will have staff presentations, then we will open it to the public. and then we will open it to the public. Okay. Number 7.4. Conduct a public hearing to consider comments regarding the dissolution of the existing Lakeview Landing Public Improvement District previously created by Resolution Number 23-19 and consider adopting Resolution Number 24-18 dissolving the existing Lakeview Landing Public Improvement District. Mr. Kaufman? Probably talk about 7.4 and 7.5 together.
We can. 7.4 is a follow-up from our meeting last month to dissolve the current bid, the Lakeview Landing Public Improvement District. As you recall, there was some interpretation from the Attorney General's Office that changed the way things needed to be worded. So we're dissolving this bid with this action of 7.4. And then on 7.5, we're creating a new one with the wording that's more suitable for the Attorney General's Office. And our attorney, Jason Selback, is here if you have any questions.
Yeah, thank you. Chris, that's exactly right. That's what we're doing here. The last meeting I was here up, kind of explaining.
Are you Jason or Jordan?
I'm Jordan.
Sorry.
I've been called worse. You're good.
There's too many Jays here.
That's no problem. We, we're a small community, so we all know each other. So that's no problem. Oh, yeah, I, I was up here last, last month, kind of explaining the Attorney General has interpreted, has read it more stringently than in the past. We have prepared some of these documents from the developer team. And so this is really just taking that to make sure that when we do go to sell bonds, that there's not going to be an issue at the Attorney General's Office. So this is, as you said, this is the public hearing that was called last week. Those notices were gone, have gone out, so we should be all good. From that perspective, it's really just a public hearing to, to hear comment. And then following this, we'll dissolve the bid. And then, as you said, Chris, the, the next action item would be to create the new bid on the same property for the same purposes. So happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
So we need to have two public hearings, one to dissolve it and then one to create it on the next agenda item. So. Or we would have put it all on one agenda. We'd have to do it separately.
Do we have questions? Listened to this before? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Does anyone in the audience have question, comment? I don't see any hands. I don't see anyone standing, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion to dissolve, pass a motion to dissolve the existing Lakeview Landing Public Improvement District previously created by Resolution Number 23-19 and consider adopting Resolution Number 24-18 dissolving the existing Lakeview Landing Public Improvement District? Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Public hearing, sir?
I did.
Oh, you did. I was reading, sorry.
Mr. Corrigan?
So moved.
Mr. Corrigan makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez seconds. Do I hear, all in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. That will pass 6-0. Okay. We'll go to 7.5. I think I say the same word except, except versus dissolve. We're going to have a public hearing to consider comments regarding the dissolution of the existing Lakeview Landing Public Improvement District. That's 7.4. It's on the screen. I'm sorry. Conduct a public hearing to consider public comment regarding the creation of the Lakeview Landing Public Improvement District and consider adopting Resolution Number 24-19 creating the Lakeview Landing Public Improvement District. And that agenda item is now on the screen in front of you. Okay?
So I don't need to make another presentation, so we can just move on into your part.
Okay. No other questions, comments? Okay. I will open the public hearing and anyone? I see no one raising their hand or standing, so I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to create the Lakeview Landing Public Improvement District and consider adopting Resolution Number 24-19, which creates the Lakeview Landing Public Improvement District?
So moved.
Mr. Wadley makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Allyn will second that. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. I hear no opposition, so that two will pass 6-0. Thank you. All right. Number eight. Thank you, Jordan. Number eight, we will move into executive session and we have discussion on matters permitted by the following sections of the Texas Government Code. Section 551071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation. 551072, deliberation regarding real property. And 551087, deliberation regarding economic development. So I'm going to convene us into executive session. I now declare the Granbury City Council is convened in open session, that all members are present. The city council will go into closed session. I now declare that the Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session and all council members are present. Counsel, other business? Nothing? Nothing? No business here? Okay. There being no further business, I announce the meeting adjourned. I don't see before Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Special meeting.